I think it's actually the glare from Greg's head.
All right, we'll leave that one off the recording. Thank you.
That was a good one, Don.
Thanks, Don. Good evening. I'd like to call the November 27, 2023, meeting of the Camden Board Selectment Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
This meeting is being held in the Board Selectmen's Office at the Hamden Town Hall. We are broadcasting over Zoom and recording it. Is there anybody else recording the meeting? Again, a shocked look on our face. All right. Don, you win the bet. Again, nobody recording. It's like five weeks in a row.
Roll there.
So.
Like the Patriots.
Moment of silence for Patriots. Thanks. Let's first on the agenda, we have minutes, three sets of minutes. Thank you, Lauren.
Here's Dalton.
All right. We'll assume he's recording as well. All right, so October 23rd. We talked about the charging station for the, what was it you said, Don, the month in a row? Just about.
Driving station, DP mandates.
Warranty review, which was really the big thing.
Motion to approve, October 25th, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the minutes of October 30th, which was our short meeting prior to the town meeting at Barton Burgess. The two big items were Dwayne giving us his resignation, a quick recap of his thoughts, and Becky asking about the tax work-off program, which we'll have a further discussion with the assessors. Is that next week?
Next week.
They're coming up next week.
Did John really move to adjourn the meeting?
I don't think so.
I had to go by memory for some of it because there's no recording of it. It was very hard to hear in that auditorium.
What? I don't remember that. The board health review, what was that?
Oh, that was you asking, how come sometimes you don't see?
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, you're wrapped up in the Fox issue. That's why. What does the Fox?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, there was a question about that. I will say, I think adjournment's correct because typically, we don't take any action during a town meeting, so there's no need to keep the meeting going. But we did go down and discuss with advisory. So I don't think we actually formally adjourned until we were done with advisory discussion. So I might add there, after tax work-off, we-
Advisory meeting.
Right. Basically, we went down, discussed warrant articles with advisory, and then adjourned.
That's right. We did adjourn it in the hallway.
Right, yeah, right. So with that correction, we had a short meeting reviewing town meeting warrant with advisory. And then we had a motion to adjourn.
Well, he's got that in there. There was a brief warrant review, so.
Okay, yeah, fine, okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Move approval, second.
On favor? Okay, and then the sixth. Pretty full meeting. The building committee was here. Bill Fabry gave us a pretty good recap of the testing. Thank you, Finn, for all we needed to know.
The senior setting building committee. I think I made the motion for that one.
That'll be correct. Yeah, I think also probably just quickly back to the meeting of the 30th. Typically, Lauren, I won't make motions. The chair doesn't typically make motions. Right, Don? Unless you only have two people here. Unless there's two people.
You might call for a motion.
Right. Yeah, same thing for the, and that might, if it's on the video, but go back to the last page, one day permit. I'm going to call for a motion.
Yep.
I think I, I think I.
You might have done that.
Yeah, Don, definitely.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Jolene from Entree?
Oh, great.
And here's Craig.
Hey, Craig.
Nice to meet you. Hi, Bob.
Okay, we got, let's see.
Move their approval number six.
We're doing cable contract first. We'll get you guys. On favor?
All right.
Thank you. All right, Lauren, pretty well off the date. No, you're still working with Pam to update some minutes before she left, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Other than that, I think we're only down to probably last week.
One, yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay, so cable contract. And we have on video. Where are you? John?
John Mar.
Yep.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, everybody.
Is that what we have for audio?
That's coming out of here.
Can you change it? Okay.
Not yet. We're still working on the audio part.
We've got bad cable service here, so it's hard to get the sound.
Thirty seconds in.
Go down to the speaker and change it to the third one down. I think.
Hello? I've lost my audio to you. Hello, hello, hello?
For some reason.
I can hear you now.
There we go.
Thank you. All right, just quickly, Dalton, are you recording?
Yes.
Okay, great. Make a note that the Times is recording our meeting. All righty. So, John, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
I remember Tom Cohen, I think he was the guy before you all, so.
Yes.
Well, that is low. Can you raise that at all?
TV volume. The remote right down.
TV old-fashioned. We used to have kids do that for us, right, Don?
Yeah. There you go.
Okay, how's that?
John?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, okay. We can hear you now.
And the people next door. Thank you.
All right.
All right, great. So after all that, John, thank you for joining us. Don, I'm going to let you kickstart us here. Thanks.
John, where are we? We got our renewals coming up. We have to hold a public hearing, I understand.
Yes.
Okay, and listen to what the people have to say. Where do we go from there?
Well, it's a pretty standard contract. It expires in March, March 16th. We can just discuss what the needs of the community are. If you have any thoughts in mind tonight, we can talk about it or at a later date. If we don't get it renewed by March 16th, the same terms and conditions will carry on, so I think we have plenty of time, but, you know, we can get it done by March as well.
I was, I was thinking of, we need to do this public hearing, so I was thinking probably January 9th after the holidays. It should be a little bit tough for everybody during the holidays. You know, have the forum after January 9th. What does that sound like?
Whatever date works best for you is fine. Yeah, it's just a sort of a formality to have the public hearing, I think.
Okay, and how do we, how do we, if we have revisions we want to make or things we want to add or negotiate, how do we do that with you?
During the public forum?
We could just set up a time. I don't know if you want to do it during a selectmen's meeting. A lot of folks have an attorney they hire, or there's volunteers. They have a cable advisory board or cable advisory committee to negotiate on behalf of the selectmen, or we can do it directly, or you assign someone. You know, I'm flexible. It works any way you want.
I think during a meeting. Okay, we'd like to do it during a meeting. Maybe we'll send you some proposals, and then we can have a meeting. We could go to talk about it then.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, but we talk about doing two separate meetings or doing the hearing in the same meeting?
Two separate meetings, yes. Yeah, well, one, we want to hear from the public, what they have to say, and the other, we have our own meeting. Now, this, this negotiation is only for the cable TV service, right? It doesn't have anything to do with any of the other services you provide.
That's correct.
Yeah, John, Don will be chair at that time, and also we'll probably be in a bit of a transition stage with town administrators, so most of the contact for all this would go through Don, the selectmen's office, and Don perhaps directly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have an email I can send you?
Yep, it's John. John, J-O-H-N. Lauren has my contact.
Okay, rather than giving out. Yeah. You'll get lots of emails.
What's your cell number, John? Yeah, thanks.
What's your home address again?
Zero, 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 zero.
All right.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right, that's pretty much it. We just wanted to, you know, get, lay the ground rules down. I'll get to you with the date for the selectmen's meeting, and I'll firm up the hearing date, okay?
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Bye.
Thank you, sir. All right. Hello.
Hello.
Oh, that's okay. Why don't you go? Come on up and get, these are really nicer chairs up here.
We have a message from our chief assessor.
Yes, yeah.
Which I am going to bring up right now. She just sent it today and wasn't sure that she would be able to.
Yeah, she just messaged, she won't be able to hop on Zoom.
No.
So, but we have her comment on record here. So, welcome.
Thank you for having us.
We'll just go through the thing.
Hello, Craig. Hello, Jolene.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Company shirt, you don't get one?
I got the jacket.
Just can't see the back.
Nice, nice. So, I think we haven't seen you guys here for, I know we had a meeting with Robert maybe a year and a half ago, a couple of years.
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah, but I think it's important to have you all in. I mean, you are IT support.
Absolutely.
And supply as well. We really need to get a sense of where we are. I know we had concerns. Don, last budget cycle, we overspent the IT line by quite a bit. You want to get a sense, was that something unexpected? Is it something we're not, you know, scheduling enough? Have expenses gone up we're not catching up with? And then I know you've alerted us to some needs with our backup at this point as well. I didn't get a sense of that. In terms of tech stuff, you got a couple of new novices over here, but Craig is really our tech guy over here. So he's going to quiz you.
He's going to quiz us.
Talk petabytes. We're not done with those terabytes. So, so give us a quick recap of what you think the services you're providing to the town at this point, because again, we're broadcasting this.
Hi, Jolene.
So we've been doing business for a while now. I've been with Entree for 10 years, and you guys have been my customers since then. We provide a full managed service for you guys. We have a tech that comes on site monthly. We have a help desk for you guys when you call in. We have a team back there that can support you guys with any daily needs. And obviously, I'm your account manager. Any quoting or new product comes through me. And then Craig's the service manager, so he handles the texts that are working with you on a daily basis.
I think some of the concerns maybe I brought up, I think to Craig, maybe for him as well, has been, like, we have a lot of email addresses. And I think it's some, and some of them are classified, to be honest, more than we think they need to be. Because they might be, you have your basic account, then you have your ultimate, or whatever it is, which provides more services more often. And we'd like a chance maybe to review them, because that gets into our monthly costs type thing. You do a great job of looking at our hardware and saying, okay, here's a great list. You know, you're going to need an update on the operating system on these four. The hard drives are bad on these three. And I think doing that on an annual basis helps us in the planning, because I know we have 40 computers, but you don't anticipate changing all 40 out on a yearly basis. And we do that scheduling thing, and it works off pretty well. Then you have the unexpected.
Yes.
Then we have the unexpected things, like you're going to talk about tonight with the backup. So give us a quick recap on the backup situation.
So I did some homework before I came here and just kind of looked at your data footprint and what your backup is and when it was purchased and all that good stuff. So right now, you have a one-terabyte data appliance. That's a physical device that sits in the closet back over here. And essentially, what it does is it takes a picture of your servers, two of them. You have multiple points throughout the day, and then it sends it up to the cloud, okay? And that's your disaster recovery plan. Sends it offsite in case, God forbid, building burns down, server's lost. Well, we still have all your stuff, and it can work. Okay. Your main server, your file server, which sits back over here, has about 884 gigs of storage on it right now being used, okay? And the other server, which is-
Excuse me, how many, how many teras is a gig?
Thousand, a thousand gigs is one terabyte.
One thousand, nine.
Thousand?
Close enough. Yes, so a thousand is one terabyte. Thousand gigabytes, one terabyte.
And a megabyte is a thousand kilobytes?
I know. What was the first part?
Kilobyte is what?
We don't even deal with that really that much.
A thousand kilobytes is a megabyte.
It's like an email.
A thousand mits is one kilo.
Yeah, it's all in a thousand, but basically-
Is this based on the metric system?
Yes. You're dealing in thousands.
Now I get it.
So your vision server, which is your, I guess, tax information and that type of stuff, is quite large, but in digging into it, it's because of a backup that Vision's doing, and that's a different story. I can get into that after. Long story short is, when the data was put into place, I think I have a note here, when it was put into place, one of these papers. 2019. That's the same appliance from 2019. You had one server at the time, and that was the main one here. So it was sized appropriately, and it probably would still be working, but we'd still be having the conversation of, hey, guys, you're getting a little close on data here. The warranty's coming up, and we're going to look at replacement, but the vision server throws it way out of whack right now, okay? So two thoughts. One is, we look at Vision, and why are they backing up so much data? I don't know.
Well, just quickly, so we had a reply from the assessors. They have a mandate from the state. You must back it up.
That's okay. We're also backing it up, though. So it's like a double backup at this point, and we can talk to Vision about that to reduce that footprint. But even if we were to do that, you're still going to be close to or over capacity for this current backup solution that you have. I believe Jolene quoted a new one for you guys. And then the interim Entree has been backing up the servers outside of that to no cost to you guys.
That's part of our managed services.
Well, we're doing it as a good faith, because we're hoping that you buy the data appliance that you guys need, okay? That's been for a few months now that we've been doing that. So you guys have outgrown the current one. It's been good to you for five years. We normally scope those out for about five years, three to five years, so you've gotten your useful life out of it. So that's the long and short of that story.
So there's two things. I went through the same thing in my office.
Yep.
And going, we're backing up our dynamic system, Microsoft Dynamics, and we were taking too many images and backing it up. And every now and then, we have to systematically go through and clean out some backups. So maybe we keep a month. When we're over a year, just look at a month, 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 rather than daily. That may be part of this, but maybe it's not. I will also say, bytes are cheap. You're talking, I mean, a terabyte's not what it used to be.
Right.
So you're talking going to a four-terabyte system, which, should we go bigger? I'm like, you know, there.
Well.
But also going back to different type of backup units I've used, you have the hardware, the backup system, and then the actual backup drives, a smaller component of it. So I didn't know if maybe the data you were quoting is one that could accommodate more, and should we, if, I forget what the number was, maybe six? How much was it?
I don't know what it was that you quoted then.
I've gone with four terabytes.
Yeah, is that the data, or is that something different?
I mean, the cost of the data, the cost of the data was 1,200. But I'm saying, for 1,500, could we get an eight-terabyte?
So a couple of thoughts on that. So the first point that you brought up, that yes, you have to purge it every once in a while. The system does that.
Okay.
And we have control over how much is stored locally, and we've reduced that to the minimum right now, just prior to bringing this up to you guys, because we wanted to see if we could get it to work again. Unfortunately, with the retention down to the minimum, it's still too much data. Like, your base on your, on your servers is outwinging this total storage of that unit, so we can't do that anymore. The second point that you brought up, yes, the data that we quoted you is a three-terabyte, whatever, just four-terabyte. And I'd have to double-check on this. The unit that you get will have expansion bays.
Okay.
So what you're buying, if you outgrow it in a few years, and I have to double-check this, because again, I don't know what unit it is she quoted, it may have expansion bays. So say, three years down the road, we're having this conversation, why don't we just slap a couple of hard drives in there and off we go?
It'll do the RAID rebuild and go from there.
And it just expands it. So that is an option.
Okay, that's what I'm going to make sure we had. We're not back to the table two years from now.
Well, it's going to be, their, their rule of thumb is 3X the amount of data that you have, so that you're not having this conversation every, every year.
And if you're getting close to the ceiling too, you're also slowing down the drive too, by.
Well, right now, it's totally stopped because it's not even-
Right, but even if you're like, getting closer, you're not to that max, you're still, still a lot of work.
Our cloud storage, you mentioned that, so we have a plan in place for the cloud storage that we're paying.
It's included with this data. That's part of the monthly bill that you guys see for the backup. And it's an infinite cloud storage, meaning, as much data as you can put up there, it's going to hold it for that period of time, which is indefinite.
And the server farm in Nebraska.
Yeah, wherever it is.
Our current is how big, you said? One terabyte?
It's a one-terabyte local device, meaning physical appliance.
And is that a RAID system, or is that just a one-terabyte?
It has a RAID system, yes. It's just built into the appliance.
Right, but I thought I heard you say earlier on, maybe I misheard, but you said we were backing up like three times?
No, so they recommend 3X.
Right.
When you're-
Before that, you said something about-
You said, you said we were backing it up, and then we were backing up to the cloud as well.
Yep.
So we have whatever data, we're backing it up where?
So it initially goes locally to the data of the appliance. And then after the retention period expires, so I don't know what it is, I have to look at the settings, it offloads to the cloud, so it's not keeping all of that storage locally. And that's the benefit of having the infinite retention in the cloud as well.
But then you were backing it up on top of that, is because we're over the-
Nope, so that was the Vision conversation earlier. So Vision is doing a backup of itself.
And Vision is one of the-
That we don't have control of. It's the tax program that resides on the server, and it's taken up quite a bit of space. Now, it's doing a backup of itself, which is fine.
And backing up locally?
And then we're taking a picture of that backup and putting it on the data, and then moving it to the cloud.
Okay.
So the conversation with Vision that we need to have is, can we get rid of a lot of these old backups?
Right.
Because we don't need them.
So they're just rewriting new backup after backup?
And it's just not-
And all the old backups are staying?
It's not offloading it, correct. Yep, so that's why, right now, it's at 933 gigs of backups.
How many?
933 gigabytes. Almost a terabyte of Vision backups.
And how many of them are redundant backups?
I would say all of them. I mean-
Yeah, how often do you change it? Right, yeah.
It's good that it's doing it, but the fact that we're backing up a server and we're taking a backup of that backup, if they ever needed it, we can get it back. So they only really need to have one backup locally on that server. Yeah, just get rid of the rest of them. So we can have that conversation with them.
Well.
Kelly's comments by the fourth paragraph down.
Right. Again, she talks about the DLs. So not that I think that conversation should happen with us, but I think the conversation should happen with Vision and the assessors, because whatever they want to do.
Yeah, at the end of the day, with the data backup appliance, obviously, it's not working the second. If you were to put the new one in place, their data's safe, because we were having a backup of that backup, so God forbid, something happens.
Something's lost.
Nothing's lost, and we can get rid of those old backups, and all the data's still there. It's not a big deal.
What, do you know offhand, what is one of the backup file sizes? Not redundancy, but just one.
A lot of them that I looked at today were like 1.5 gigabytes. Can they go back years? They're just not offloading for some reason, and I don't know why.
So in the simplest terms are, say, one and a half gigs per backup.
Yep.
You mirror the, you mirror the server now. So that's already getting backed up there, and there's, we're going to save all that space.
You're going to save all the space, assuming that Vision is like, oh, yeah, I don't know why it's doing that.
Four terabytes is sufficient then, if we're back-loading?
Yeah, so I have current backups, everything is 1.7 terabytes. That's with the backups of the backups of the backups, okay? If we're getting rid of everything, it's 803 gigs.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
There's also some Zoom meetings I saw on there. I don't know if those need to be there. They're pretty big. It was a few hundred gigs.
Yeah.
But again, 146 gigs I had on here, but you're looking at one terabyte, even if you keep those.
Right.
So the four-terabyte one is going to last you a while.
Is the fish backed up on here as well? Because if we keep increasing the fish, is that a different server, or is that this server, the laser fish?
The what?
Laser fish is the cloud.
Oh, laser fish.
It's only cloud.
The laser fish, yes. And you're talking about the Zoom files. The Zoom files, just a transfer, took two days.
Yeah, that's a lot.
I mean, it's a huge. The other side of the coin, though, is that if we want to have them stored in the Zoom cloud, there's an expense to that.
Right.
So.
So I guess if we had more space on the backup setup, we can keep them there without paying the Zoom charge, if we're already paying for that.
Do we even need the backups, if they're already posted on YouTube?
That's totally different discussion. I don't know how YouTube keeps it, or what you guys need for legality and all that. I don't know.
That's another discussion. I think just to get Craig and Jolene out, though, we have a quote for a four-terabyte system.
Yes. The other option is to store Zoom files on the hard drive of this laptop.
That'll blow up.
Well, the risk of that is, I don't know if you need to keep these for any reason. If the hard drive on your laptop dies.
We have them also in YouTube.
Right, but I mean, there's potentially an expenses. I like going back to old Zoom meetings, just to make sure we didn't drop something or, and go back for review. I was more like, I like this quote here, but I would like to see a quote for, honestly, throw the other hard drives in now. I've had hard drives fail in RAID systems and-
They're all covered in a warranty, John.
I know that, but I'm saying, okay, so I've got an eight-drive RAID already built up. You quoted us on eight terabytes, and it was an extra, she would get a terabyte now for, you know, under, well under $200.
I'm running 32 terabytes at home.
Right, so I wouldn't mind getting the quote for an eight-terabyte.
We can get it. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, right now, this is not horrendous money at all. It's just, and then we talk about where are we going with the whole?
Just be careful, though, because you are going to be paying a monthly for that extra space that you're potentially never, ever going to touch or use. Yeah, it's a nice safety net. But you're also now five, six X, your data footprint. It's not being used. It's just, just stale.
So what's our, what's our monthly? I mean, you've got a hardware cost there. What's our monthly gonna go up to when we go from one to four?
I'd have to check.
So I'd go, it's at three forty-five now or three fifty-five and it would go up to six.
Three forty-five.
Six something, yeah.
That's the monthly charge.
Yeah.
On top of the appliance charge, which is the one
The appliance, no, the appliance is free. It's just the labor for us to transfer everything from the old device to the new. That's the twelve hundred.
So we're gonna get the, we're gonna get the four terabyte dado for free if we upgrade the monthly charge.
Correct.
Pretty much any of the dados that they sell, if you, if you sign up for a three-year contract, which most people do, they would be stupid not to. The appliance is free. But your, your monthly is gonna go up depending on the size difference.
Right.
And again, if it's just sitting there not being used, yeah, you wanna play
If we go from three forty-five to six something
Right.
For four terabytes. I mean, if we're going to eight terabytes, now you're looking at
Well, that's the other thing too, because we're inside the budget here. So you're changing what we're doing right now for an extra, you gotta figure six months of an extra three, four hundred dollars a month. I know it's not huge money, but we run a pretty tight ship here. So do, that's kind of the question, do we have it in the IT budget to accommodate that in the current budget? Again, going back to the earlier comment I made, we already overspent the budget last year because of unexpected things. This is another unexpected thing. So I take a hard look at what we've spent so far. Go back to my comment about email addresses. Do we have them where we need them to be? And is there a saving somewhere like that?
On that, on that note, I have a couple of questions too.
Sure.
About just the software and device management and stuff like that. So at least we have fifty-eight devices on the device management and then two servers. So that's sixty, sixty units in total, was we're looking at roughly?
Yeah.
Okay. But our antivirus is only showing for fifty devices. Is that, does, does not every device need an antivirus?
I'd have to check to see what the differential is. It could be your PCs offline for three months. I don't, I don't know. Laptop got stored away and it's just not checking in.
And then we have forty-one that have Office three sixty-five premium and then thirteen basic three sixty-five.
Yeah.
Right, like who's not using Office and emails, you know, who's not using all that stuff, you know? Do we need all the, the premiums?
I think, oh, the other question would be, you talked about sixty devices and we have fourteen employees in the town hall. Basically, where are these? Are we covering the police station ones too? Or is that a separate contract?
That is not included in the contract.
So I think kind of the question would be, I know the library has more computers than they have people because they have public access and things like that. But And some of that stuff is covered by their Mars contract and maybe not by ours. I know their access
Yes.
Yeah. So a, a list of the sixty, I know we get a good list. But I have seen on there a couple of, Bob has seen this before, a couple of laptops that are actually not in service, but still on the list. And that would be kind of a question. If we have sixty devices and say fifteen employees, where are these other devices?
More than happy to, I don't know if it would be you Craig that I would sit down with and just go and go over the list or
He lives for that type of thing.
Does he?
Do you guys get the monthly reports that come out?
We do.
Yes.
You do? Okay. I just wanted to make sure because that has a list of all the devices and
And that's, I was talking to Jane about that. If we could maybe redo some of the naming conventions and really get a sense of, you know. She was doing a pretty good job of sorting them by department, but change the naming button, you know. At some point, maybe it's not Billy's computer. You know, it's Parks dash one or something like that.
Right.
So where, where does the laser fish stuff go?
Cloud.
Laser fish?
It's all in the cloud.
Cloud.
Yeah. They love that term, don't you?
No, I just have a rotary phone.
Yeah, of course.
If you wanna be added to the monthly, I can
Still dialing four numbers?
Anybody you want to listen to. With it included.
So this does give a pretty good list of who's got what. I mean, there's a couple in here.
Like I said, it's been updated and I like the fact you're doing some name changes and that's good, but other ones
Mine, mine shows up on here now.
Yeah, I think last time we came out, you weren't on there.
No.
And I know Burin went around, he, with Jane, they labeled the computers as well, so.
My only concern is that Burin is very tightly scheduled.
Yes, all my techs are.
And sometimes, you know, he doesn't have a chance to address all the issues that we have.
That's why we try and take time to make sure we've got them figured out ahead of time. Lauren, the department will send out a list. Hey, Burin's coming next week. Get your thing, don't just come up, you know, so he's got a list in front of him, knowing what's gonna happen. Because I mean, his time's important too.
Yeah, I mean, the monthly is something that's included in your MSP agreement. If it's not enough time, we can discuss other options. But it is gonna cost more money. I mean, it's a tech time, so I can't, I can't avoid that unfortunately. If, if you guys wanna schedule a day outside of tech time, I'm happy to do that. But again, it's gonna cost money.
Right.
And it's not something that is planned. You know what I mean? So it's gonna be outside of your, your budget planning.
Here's a question for you.
Yes.
I see four devices in here that look ancient. Thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Come on, Windows XP was a great option.
So they're all desktops, not the flexes. Uh, Last Page Consultant Tax Animated Conservation. What is the lifespan of those? Are we pushing up the max of the serviceable limit on those devices?
So if you look at this report in its entirety, it's color coded. And what we do is we base it off of a five-year refresh cycle. Okay? Obviously you can go longer than that if you want. But in our experience, we start seeing issues after five years. So to avoid that, we say, hey, an asset is X years old. Color it red on here or yellow, depending on if it's coming up soon for five-year renewal. And that's where we, how we get this list here. So yeah, you have some older devices on here. Some of them are coming up right now. Some of them are, are due already.
I, I understand that, you know, the refresh. I mean, I, I worked with Atlas Cocko with device refresh. So I understand the need to keep them fresh, but, but I'm just looking at the old ones right now and that, you know. I'm, I'm worried about the hard drives or anything.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You know.
And are those accurate?
Are they not performing efficiently anymore because of the age, you know?
Where are they listed to?
Some of them, yeah, the assessors.
And I mean, are these actual?
Are they workhorses?
Or are they really here?
Right.
Yeah. Like I say, are you paying them to see if they're actually in service?
That is something that we do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But if somebody turns them off, they're gonna stay under our management unless somebody says, hey, you know,
Right.
Someone else turned their computer off, they're never gonna turn it back on again.
Insurance company, you're charging for the car and you sold it two years ago.
Same, same idea. So again, I'm happy to review all of this with you guys and we can go
It might be sometime like actually, I hate to say it, come in and physically put your hand on every computer on this list and see if it's actually in use. Or it's been in a closet for two years and we shouldn't be paying for it.
But they don't report back to you if they're having errors or bugs like that or something like that. You know, sometimes it gives you the, the critical errors and, you know, then viewers some type of report, self-report back.
Right, right.
So I don't know.
We have, we monitor all of that. So again, but if somebody just turned it off.
Right.
It's gonna show offline. It's still under our, our management and we don't know.
Right. But I guess what I'm asking, and I'll, I'll rephrase it, that if, if a computer on this list has been on and it reports back some type of critical error. You will know about it.
Absolutely.
But you don't see anything then?
No, I mean, we've, we've flagged you guys before and said, hey, someone else's hard drives got a pre-fail. Let's change it now before it actually fails. And then we have a problem, right? So that's part of that monitoring constantly.
Right. And also looking at that, part of the numbering thing, you know, we also have to include your service, you're in charge of the computers at the senior center as well.
Yes.
Which probably adds another, that's eight of them on the list. We have two or three at the fire station, maybe. Obviously Mark has one at the highway department. So it's not just one site.
Right.
You're a multi-site company for us, which is good. So that probably does expand it up to, you know, twenty-five employees or something like that. So, um, so I guess we're looking to approve their request to, you know, go ahead and upgrade the data system. And then Bob, we really need to look at where we stand with that, that budget for the rest of the year. We'll look over the account for, with Jolene. What we have for the Microsoft Office product.
Sure.
And if it's necessary, if we need to downgrade some, maybe there are some that need the, the ultimate instead of the basic.
Right.
Could be.
Okay.
Okay. I do wanna stress, in my opinion, you guys have given us great service.
Burin gives us excellent service.
Glad to hear that too.
Sometimes I need
Well, not just him, I'm saying you all too.
When he's here, he does very well for us.
Love to hear it.
Thank you.
So we good with the requests for?
Do move.
Second.
All in favor? Blank check. There you go.
Yeah, well, let's get you the quote for the, the bigger one, even though I wouldn't recommend it.
That's fine. That way we get our due diligence and say, you know, fine.
Yep. And then the, the additional monthly cost too, that would
That was, that's the key bar right there. Right, yeah. I mean, if they want a fifty bucks, hmm, maybe. If it goes up double the price like Craig said, then you go, no, we're fine with a four.
Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna use
Exactly.
All of that storage and a five
If it's expandable down the roads.
And by then you're gonna look at replacing the unit anyways, because it's not gonna be under warranty. If something goes wrong, you're gonna end up paying for it. So you might as well just replace the unit at that point, you know?
In a year from now, they're gonna be giving away sixteen terabyte drives. So it's just how it's going.
And then I'll use out to set up a time to review all of this with
That'd be great.
Somebody. I don't, you guys can tell me who you want me to talk to and I'll
Set up a time when you're available, come down here and we'll, if you give us a, you know, a week's notice or something like, we can make it happen, right?
Yeah.
And as far as emails, who would I talk to to coordinate with that?
I think, that's actually
You can review it at the same time.
We should look that over, look over the list, contact those departments and see what their actual usage is for those emails.
Okay.
We had some boards, we had some boards that were giving an email address to every member of the board.
And they never use it.
Right.
Do you have that list too of email addresses?
I don't have it with me.
But you can get that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Do you want me to send that to you?
Yeah.
Some boards, you know, it doesn't make sense. Our board, it does make sense, but other boards, it wouldn't make sense like everybody on Parks to need a separate address. Yeah.
Yeah, I can review that too.
Great.
Okay.
Super.
Anything else for us?
I think we're good. Lauren?
Good.
Bob?
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you guys.
Uh, we're totally, fire department, are you good with entree?
Good.
Alright.
Alright.
Snuck in there.
No, I will say, uh, I think Burin did a nice job organizing up there and it looks a lot better.
Awesome.
Good.
So.
Awesome. Thank you guys.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See how we folded that right into you, Ed?
Yes. We up next?
You are.
We're up next.
And every time it's like a new shirt, you know something? Why aren't we gonna get new shirts? Oh, I guess they're all in Vinnie bought, you know, one year ago. Chief?
Bob, how are you?
Ed?
How are you? Tonight I bring forth a candidate to be a full-time firefighter. We round out our position number three for us. We held interviews. He rose to the top of the interviews. And I'd like to get the board to see if they have any questions for him.
How are you?
Great.
Gentlemen.
Brendan Kennedy.
Brendan, have you fought any fires before?
Yes.
Great. How'd you do? How'd you do with them? Good?
Did good.
Alright. But Chief, how many candidates did you have?
Three.
Three, okay. Good. Where do you live?
Palmer.
Okay.
I'm a member of the Palmer Caldwell Fire Department right now.
Oh.
And I work with Cataldo Ambulance out of Holyoke. I do that on a per diem basis. I have my EMP as well, which is also important. Most of the calls are gonna be medical calls.
Oh, great.
The, which, which Palmer one are you in? Don't they have like seven?
District one. District one, yeah, yeah. You're right.
The main one.
Yeah.
They have a prudential committee, right? That's what runs them? Prudential committee?
I don't get too far involved with that. The chief is the, I go up to chain command, I get my company officers and then I answer to the chief, so.
I know the village of, you know, like Three Rivers and Bonneville, they have, you know, prudential committees. I'm not sure Palmer does.
They talk about combining all of the fire departments into one at some point.
Fuck, they talked about that for forty years.
Yeah.
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 So you look like you've got all your trainings, certifications.
Yeah, I have like Two pro-board certified hazmat. And my NREMT and my Mass State EMT certifications. Kinda continue to pursue. I would like to attain my paramedic. So that's something I'm gonna be working on as well.
So your, your call, fire in Palmer and per diem at Cataldo.
Yes, sir.
And what are you doing in real life?
I have a small business. I, I have, I have a little business, but actually last month, I did thirty calls in Palmer alone. Two, three o'clock in the morning calls. And then Holyoke, uh, I, weekly per diem, I usually try to jump on ships as much as possible. But those ships are anywhere from twelve, sixteen, twenty-four hour ships. So.
It's hard to fit in.
Yeah. I mean, the, the reality of it is, um, being a first responder and all of the training and the investment of time, money, resources that I put into it. Has put me in a position where it's what I have to do. It's what I want to do, you know? So that's, that's why I'm here in Hampden.
You got the, you got the knowledge in it now, so.
Right.
Yeah, so music, right?
Right.
What is your business?
I have a tattoo parlor. First, I started out in Germany, um, worked over in Dublin Island for a while in Temple Bar District. And so it's kind of brought me around. It's been a, a great resource to be able to go and travel and, and learn things.
You have employees underneath you there?
I have a war and firefighter. Um, she comes in and picks up a day here or there. You know, so it's, I'm in it because it's a, it's a, it's a cheap location. The, the rent's not too high, so I can kind of keep it going when I'm doing other things. And it provides a place for Haley Smith to go and to do her artwork. And so it's just kind of like a
How will that work when you, if you take this position?
Oh, I, I work by appointment. I don't go and sit in there.
So it's not a Monday through Friday thing?
No, not at all. People reach out to me through Messenger and they'll set appointments through, they'll look at my Facebook page.
Clients already that are
Oh, yeah.
So they can come in in your time. Okay.[1606.02] So they can come in in your time. Okay.
Okay. So bad weather getting here in the winter, no problem?
No problem at all.
Right.
Yeah, I, uh, no issue. I grew up here. I'm very familiar with inclement weather in New England and how to handle it.
Driving a Corvette.
Luckily, once you cross over the town line into Hampden, you have pretty good roads here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
I'm looking forward to serving your community.
I will move, we appoint Brendan Kennedy to, uh, probationary or how would it, how would you start that?
Um, I would make a recommendation, um, to approve him per pending, um, a physical and, um, drug screening.
To full-time, but not probationary?
Right.
This is for the full-time.
Full-time office.
For full-time positions. So he would need, um, physical paid by us, paid by the town. Um, he'll need drug screening, Cory check, and also the physical agility test, um, that's required. So once he passes all those, um, we usually, as long as he clears his physical, Cory and drug screening, we'll put him on and then have him, um, go do the physical agility test and then reimburse him for it.
How are you feeling about that one?
I'm ready to go. Ready yesterday.
Ready for the agility test? Good thing they don't ask us for that right time.
Maybe maybe we should make an adjustment to our handbook.
Yeah. For the selectmen, the ability test.
Wasn't a kid over here.
I would move to appoint Brendan Kennedy to full-time firefighter.
Subject to the.
Subject to the restrictions, qualifications, um, training and, um, Cory checking certifications as recommended by the chief.
Is that good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Brendan. Sorry to put you a little wrinkled like that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. It was a long, uh, long haul, but you came back with a good candidate.
Yeah.
Do we have the brush truck in order?
Yep. You should be getting the, um, paperwork tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Um, to sign the packet.
Okay. Okay, uh, video has gone out on Zoom. It just shows Bob on the screen.
You got a, he changed the video. Said it, the arrow's not on. There we go.
Who's this young man?
Don. How are you?
Good. Good. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
You're on.
Oh, well, I'm, uh, here tonight, uh, because, uh, for the Hampden Senior Center billing committee. Uh, as you know, uh, we had nine members of the committee and we currently, uh, due to one resignation, have eight. And I think it, uh, would be wise to, uh, fill that position so that we will have nine. Uh, we had one crucial vote. It came down to a five to four decision. We have a candidate who, uh, is a member of the community and has attended most of our meetings just to observe that as a member of the community. And I approached him and asked him if he would be interested in the position, which he enthusiastically said he would. Uh, so, uh, we had a vote in our committee to make a recommendation to the selectmen that, uh, they appoint, uh, uh, Michael Duran, uh, to be, uh, that fill that ninth spot. And it was unanimously approved by our committee. So you people are the appointing authority. So, uh, we're just make the recommendation that, uh, you appoint him as to fill out our committee.
I will say, having attended, like, uh, like Don said, the vast majority of the meetings, Mike has always been engaged in what goes on there.
Yeah.
You know, so when they ask for public comment, he's always got something pretty salient to say.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, we, the committee's been pretty good about sharing the handouts with any member of the public. And he's always wanted to like take one, look it over and come back with a comment.
And it's it's unique that, you know, we're halfway through this project and entering a certain part of the phase of it. Uh, and so there's no learning curve.
That's very key. Right.
Uh, so anyway.
He's already read in on everything to this point.
Yeah, exactly.
So move. Is Mike on his way down or?
Uh, no, they have a death in the family, so they're kind of in and out of town.
Can't question.
No, but you can come to a meeting. I think we're meeting Monday, right?
Meeting Monday. Before I informed him that, uh, he's disappointed that, uh, that, uh, we have, the next meeting is Monday and the architect has asked that we set aside four hours to.
Four hours.
So we got four hours free on Monday.
And he's willing to accept the position?
Yes, I have approached him and asked him if he's setting with you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Got a full committee, Don. Congratulations. Four, four hours on Monday?
Four hours, yeah.
Good thing I have extra.
Did you get sworn in?
Yeah.
I think we swore everybody in.
My.
Yeah, we wrote up appointment sheets and everything.
We appointed him, he gets sworn in.
Not Mike.
That guy doesn't know. He's a hired employee.
No, no. Mr. Duran.
He needs to get sworn in. Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So inform him that he's got to come and see, even being sworn in.
Either Sheila, yeah.
Before Don leaves, uh, Becky has a copy of the contract. I drafted the contract. It's with town council. Becky had a copy as of last week. We should have it back from town council in a day or two and then it'll be issued.
Good. Okay.
And they're coming on Monday with the team.
With the team.
Yeah. Great.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Cell tower, cell tower lease. So this has been with town council, as I reported last week, you know, they're very concerned. They don't sneak something in there. You see the recap? Like Rose gave us a pretty good, uh, history of how it's been going. I think we still have the question. I haven't seen an answer yet about, uh, I don't know if anyone reached out to Scott to ask the money that we're paying for leasing space on a tower. Was that the tower? Which tower is it? And did we get an answer from the chief?
No.
Okay. It'll probably, uh, last week if we can get that answer.
Now, this, this one ten to two, is that rent that we took?
I mean, we're the, we're leasing the property, right?
Well, that, that escalates the money we get because they get, yeah, right.
No, but, but I mean, so they, they're.
That's good. No, that's our, that's our money. Right. When they get more carriers, we get more money based on this.
Okay. How many, how many they got on there now?
I don't know if it's three anymore, because, uh, was it Sprint and who merged?
Yeah, right.
T-Mobile and somebody merged.
Well, whatever. So, so we think, we think, you know, we got two on there.
At least two. It may be three now. Yeah.
And you had asked before if, if, if the escalator clause was being enforced.
I think that was if we could, uh, and that should be researched by either Dick or Cliff, you know, next time you see him in here. And that would be reflected on the green sheet that we get on an annual basis before, remember that sheet that comes in showing, uh, you know, rent income? I think if you went back to, wait a minute, if you open your green sheet right now, it shows on that, uh, that summary page that goes in the front. But I'd like to see that has been increasing. So I had to kick it down, but I think we are waiting for a couple answers. I'd like to see the answer from the chief about that part there, because Craig's made a good point that if it's on this tower, it's supposed to be free. If it's on the other tower that's privately owned on private land, that's different.
Is it still SBA owns that tower?
Yes.
So they own both of them?
They do. And they pay, uh, whoever owns, I thought it was Norm Turnberg, but whoever owns that area back there. I'm done. Down the road it goes. But, uh, um, and just a quick reminder, so on the eleventh, we'll be having the hearing for the public, the variance at, uh, Boot and Fuel, whatever it's called, Comedians Plus, the gas station. Pretty, pretty clear which one is theirs since we're down to one down, right?
You can figure that out.
You go back to when we had three. Heck, there were four at one point.
Four at one point.
Yeah. It was all regular. Right. Fifteen cent a gallon.
And let it.
Boiling cans.
Oh, my gosh.
And, and next week we got the, next week we have the.
Tax classification.
Yes.
And the stay at the union meeting. You know, the budget kickoff meeting?
Well, I was thinking of the state of the union meeting. That might be something that, um, Bernie might want to tell the prospective applicants about that they could listen in. They don't have to identify, they don't have to identify themselves. It might give a good chance to hear the highway super duty, the police chief and the fire chief.
Maybe the tree warding.
Maybe the tree ward, which would be enough to discourage them.
Stop.
Have they done any tree work this year? Have they done any tree work this year? Have you seen anything?
On my road, but your road. When they take down that, uh.
When do you want to do the state of the union?
Next week.
Next week?
Lauren's been working with Doug and getting the paperwork together.
I don't think he's going to have, I don't know whether he will have applicants.
Anybody at this early?
A lot of them will wait until the last week to apply.
Wow, that says a lot about them. Procrastinators club?
So I see you're leaving me with a lot of stuff to do next week.
Well, forget the week after, because you want to start the, um, because I really want you to take charge of that police thing.
Yeah, I know.
You know?
Yeah.
Mister, Mister Hardball, you know, like, come on, craps. When I was in charge, we paid them a buck an hour and they bought their own bullets.
They did.
Oh, yeah, right. If they still got them.
They did. They did.
You don't need new ones.
No.
Right?
They did.
And don't forget, uh, the big event we're talking about, of course, is Sunday night.
Sunday night.
Going to be there?
I don't believe so. I think it'll be in Vermont.
Again? It's every first Sunday in December?
That's where we get the Christmas tree.
Really?
Yeah, I go up with the, the twins.
You ever seen Christmas Vacation?
That's Don. Hang on. Uh, Elijah doesn't see a Christmas story on the, uh, little rifle or something. Um, so we have the, uh, a little schedule here. And quickly want to thank, uh, Jane and Lauren for all the work that they've done on this. And thank goodness, Green Metal Singers has agreed to come back again. Otherwise, I don't think anybody would attend if we were singing, right?
Well, that's nice.
You can zoom in.
We can't even get the zoom to work in here.
We'll put you on FaceTime.
How are we going to get to work out there?
We're going to have the button ready?
The button's ready.
The button's ready? Yeah.
You can do it on the phone.
Zoom you in. Voice FaceTime you in on the phone.
I don't know what condition I'll be in.
Oh, now the story.
I'm tired from the drive.
From sawing that tree, that must be it.
That's box wine.
Hey, hey, that wasn't the earlier meeting. Uh, candy cane and reindeer, reindeer food. And of course, Mr. and Mrs. Santa will be delivered by the fire truck.
Now, they're going to do the fire truck through town a little bit, is that what they're thinking?
I think they're still, uh, looking for volunteers for that. So, yeah, we do appreciate the fire department, everything they've done in volunteering that in the past. I think everybody really appreciates what they do. I don't know if we had any real correspondence. Lauren?
I don't have anything.
Bob? Anybody emailing you?
No. No. I'm getting a lot of emails.
Do you?
Usually fifty to sixty a day.
Nothing relevant?
No. No one's, uh, sent anything worth mentioning here. So.
Really?
Here.
Here?
A lot of, a lot of, maybe half of those are ads.
Okay, great. Well, I know Lauren gets a billion MMA emails a day. Thank you for for, thank you for forwarding that.
Committee email. I must have gotten three of those myself today. I mean, it's just excessive. So.
Government job. Well, what about on your report this? I want, really want to hear about the conservation agent.
Okay.
And I think that extends back as far as the EV charging station, right, Don?
We are, we're halfway there. Our Conservation Commission has met with the candidate. And they think he has promise and would like to go forward. The Grand B Conservation Commission Chair apparently wasn't in sufficient communication with the selectmen and some others. And he wants, rather than have a candidate in for their, their fourteenth meeting, which was what we scheduled, they postponed it until the next meeting. And he had to speak with, uh, some others in town to make sure that everyone was on board. So still hopeful. Uh, I get, uh, regular communications from the candidate, sent me a message today. And, um, we'll see. I think we'll know during the month of December whether Grand B is going to come into this or not. The deal was that we would take fifteen hours. Grand B was going to take twenty hours. So. Also, the Conservation Commission, I mentioned to some of you that, uh, John Cushman has relocated to Lee, Massachusetts and resigned. The associate member has resigned and Mr. Netherwood is going to leave as a full-time member and become associate, simply because of his time issues. And also, I've been informed by the chair and by Ted Zibert that they're planning to resign in the spring. And so the issue is recruitment. Uh, if nothing happens, we'll be down to two members in the spring. So, uh.
But at least for the, for the next few months, we have.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Um, Tom Page.
Right.
Yep, and Judy and Ted.
Yeah.
I tell you, losing Judy and Ted is a tremendous loss. I mean, and John really stepped up and watched the meetings, et cetera. Andrew, I can certainly understand the time commitment on his part.
Yes.
You know? So, um, now the, obviously Andrew wants to be an associate, which is, as we know, just appointed by their own committee. As long as it's faculty notice, et cetera.
I am preparing the application for the MBI's, uh, big grant program in the spring. And in a conversation with them this past week, they said that they look favorably upon communities that have applied for a so-called planning and equity grant, which ensures that when the project does take place, that all areas of town, uh, will be part of it. And so I applied. And we'll see.
What's the, that other grant you're saying?
The big one comes out.
No, no, you said.
So what is a planning and equity?
What's a planning and equity grant?
This is just a small planning grant that they give out, but they said to me, you want to do one of these.
Okay.
Because if you've done one, uh, and assured us that you're going to do it fairly and equitably in town to all neighborhoods and areas, then, you know, we look upon that favorably. So.
So you applied for that?
I did.
Okay.
Last week. So.
Great.
Great. What are you going to do with that when it comes in?
I don't know. We'll, we'll build a.
What is that amount?
It, believe it or not, they did not have a figure. I think it's thirty thousand dollars.
It's just to have somebody go over and draw.
That's it.
A map.
Yeah.
Draw that Fernwood.
Much of it has already been done.
Oak and Old Fernwood area.
We've already done much of it. So, um, how that work? Yeah, it's, it's there. Yeah. So, um, I did inform the staff that, uh, the decision is for December the twenty-sixth and that the two half days are now eliminated and they're going to be full days. That would be Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Well, it's not Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve. That's the thing. It's because it's four days before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, no sense to.
Yes.
Yeah.
And these are the committees, uh, where we've, and we've agreed that, uh, I mean, you agreed that recently that we would put an ad in the paper.
Right.
We're doing that.
Is that something you and Lauren are working on?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, most of my time the last week was preparing the contract for the senior center expansion project. And, uh, it's a pretty large contract, about thirteen pages.
Hmm.
And as soon as, uh, town council has finished the review and any changes are made, uh, we will issue the contract. I've also been in touch with president at EDM and, uh, also the person that we will be working with, will be working with the town, I should say. So I think that's all set. And, uh, the next thing that goes out will be the, uh, fire department, uh, RFP. And, um, the master plan project, uh, is, is also, uh, done and, uh, ready to go. I've also contracted for the work at Academy Hall.
Are they thinking of doing it this year or waiting for the spring?
I, I didn't get a response. I just put, I, when I talked to them, I said, you know, we'd like to have it done right away, as soon as you can. I didn't get a response from them. They said, we'll, we'll let you know.
For either one or?
Both of them, Hastings and the other. Laserfish progress, well, uh.
Is that, is company one and two the same company? Because they have the same email address.
I don't know. These were the, this is the list that was given to me by the Laserfish headquarters in Rochester.
That's odd. We're just typing here on their point.
We read.
Yeah.
Working with Rise Engineering and the kickoff meeting we had this morning for the, uh, East Main Street Bridge Project.
Yeah.
And, um, it's a two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar grant. And there's an eighty-two thousand dollar, uh, local match, of which thirty-two thousand will be the result of in-kind contributions. And the town is going to have to come up with fifty thousand.
So that was kind of a surprise. I was on the meeting this morning. Yeah. Uh, one thing I did suggest in the meeting was perhaps, since the bridge is part of the, the gaming corridor, if you would, maybe we could apply for part of the gaming money for our fifty thousand dollar contribution. You know, it'd be a good use. It's right on the same drag. The other part that just.
Because they're, they're in, into a new round as we speak.
It's had a good holiday season.
Question I have.
Well, the other thing that just. This whole thing about replacing that bridge. I was finding we're replacing the bridge because the bridge needs replacing. And the focus just seems to be about, oh, golly, there could be a flood. Oh, my gosh, we're building for the twenty-five year storm. Well, I got to say, in the past three or four years, we've had a bunch of twenty-five year storms. We had the hundred year storm in oh-five when the bridge flooded. That's the worst I can ever memory of being. And it's all about improving it to a twenty-five year. We've had those. We haven't seen that flooding. And to me, because I know you're applying for a tip grant to pay for the cost of replacing the bridge, but if that doesn't go through, the town's on the hook for replacing the bridge.
Not necessarily.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying. If we're, we're, I want to replace bridges because the bridge is a danger. And I really haven't got that sense yet.
Same, same as you, that, that when we look at the bridge, there were structural issues, just an old bridge.
Hmm.
And that although it's safe, you could see even from the photos today that, uh, there's a lot of spalling.
The spalling is there, but I mean, does it extend? Does it extend? I saw that fifteen, twenty years ago when we saw the flooding. Yeah, the cement around the thing is failed. Then you had Mark put the cones up because the outer two rails were bad.
Yeah.
Well outside the travel lane. But, oh, gosh, they may just put the cones up. And they go back into, and this may be just the same as the problem, not problem, but this report of Rock and Dundee.
Yeah, but before you get to Rock and Dundee, the East Main Bridge.
That's them.
Right. Is that, is the DEP saying that it's failed?
The DEP has not been involved.
So there's, there's no, nothing on the state saying our bridge is in disrepair?
No. This came as a result of the MVP project. And that's.
So no, nothing.
The other side of the coin that we, we heard today. Kind of the other side of the coin that we, we heard today. At the meeting, that part of what they're looking at there is some so-called green infrastructure upstream to absorb more of the water upstream so that it doesn't come down and create problems downstream.
Potential, potential flooding.
Nothing from the state, though, has been mandated us that we have to repair the bridge? And there's no safety concerns with the bridge?
Well, that's a no on that, I mean, Mark has certainly put the codes out there.
Sure, can Mark just go and replace the rails then if they're rusting?
Which is similar to what we did on the Summers Road.
I mean, if, if the bridge itself structurally is good and we not, you know, the, the state hasn't come down and said, hey, you know, your, your bridge is in disrepair, it's not on the list of anything, why are we replacing it?
And I worry about this tip thing too. We talked before about, okay, we had the Rock and Dundee meeting and all of a sudden they told us, hey, we applied for a tip grant on your behalf. I always wonder, you only get so many bites at the apple and they just took a bite away from us, we're not going to get another tip because the state used one of our tips, basically. And we talked about tip grants for potentially doing something at the intersection at Lac Ashina, whether we do roundabout or light or whatever. And if we use that millions of thousands of tip money, does it take away from the opportunity to fix something else? And I just go back to, just like kind of what Craig said, are we fixing this because it's a potential, I want to fix bridges because of, we lost video again.
Just click on the video.
The understanding I have from the report, and I could share the report with you again, is that the bridge has issues. And although it is safe now, that it's timely to get into a process that will take the better part of five years. And the understanding is that it will go to the tip. And if your question is, will it compromise the town's ability to get a tip project at the, at the main intersection over there, I thought that was kind of off limits. I thought we, that had been rejected.
No, I'm saying for whatever other tip project we have, we tying up, you know, oh, well, you got this, you can't have for something, cause something else might come down the road, that's all.
Might come down the road.
Yeah. I, I go back to kind of what, I think Craig's point is a hundred percent right, you know. I'd like to hear from, I mean, the state certainly sent forty engineers to tell us about Rock and Dundee.
That's, so, little story. When I bought my house, we had the chimneys inspected. Company came in and said, oh, your chimney's got to be replaced. Come to find out, the previous owners had just replaced them within ten years. We had a second opinion, the guy says, your chimneys are beautiful, why would you want to replace them? So I'm concerned that, you know, maybe, maybe the consultant is just looking for work.
Yeah, like mechanic that wants a new timing belt after you put one in yesterday? Yeah, yeah.
Send you the structural report.
Well.
And we can review it again.
Well, here's the other thing, what I did from the thing, so this is a plan and gonna provide a plan for us. And then it will still be our option whether we go forward at that point.
You, it, it's just like the design of the sidewalk over here.
Right.
On Summers and Allen. You don't have to do it.
Except we do have to come up with fifty grand.
It'll be designed.
We still have to come up, well, thirty-two is in-kind service, but fifty is out of pocket, whether it's gaming money or some other source.
And the other question was, ones of talent meeting, goes it down? You know, for funding?
Yeah.
You know, is it the point where like I was asking, is the bridge structurally unsound to where like, oh, we have to close the road?
I'm not sure you have to close the road, but let me send back the structural report that we got a while back.
There we go, yeah.
Six months ago, we have another look at it.
And can it just be replaced, you know, repaired?
I agree that we shouldn't be doing make work, but I don't think this is. I think that there are enough significant issues for that bridge that it makes some sense.
But if they're, if they're hounding on Rock and Dundee, why are they not hounding on this one then?
Yeah, right.
I don't think anybody knows.
What about high traffic compared to low traffic?
That's, that's a bunch of a puzzle with anything going on, so.
Oh, that one, right out of my mind there, Don, has that ever happened to you?
Never.
What?
Where am I?
Thanks for coming by. Wow. Oh, thank you, thank you, Don, for reminding me. The report, I sent you guys, I found that, Craig, it's over next to you, in my backpack there. I did find that report that was at the, so it was commissioned by the school department. Did you see that they did both middle schools? So if you guys would like copies of this, I can have copies made at the office.
You know what, you don't have to make, just make the DWB ones.
That'll only be a dollar then, instead of two dollars, I mean, you've got it.
All right.
Twist his arm.
Right, back to the box.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I know what you mean. Hey, you might want to see it, just to see it, we'll run the whole thing, so you both want a copy? We probably have one in the office, but like you said, that was back in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, who knows where it is right now.
Right, so it was them, them who commissioned it back then. All right, I'll get copies, I'm gonna email them and then I'll mail you a copy and then I'll drop them at your house.
All right, yeah, I'll be home.
Well, that's right, you're having a good time. Any board reports?
Just that, this Wednesday, twenty ninth, seven PM, the superintendent is gonna be, be a public forum at the Wilberham Country Club and the superintendent's going to take questions and discuss the possible reorganization, having eighth graders go to Minichad and some other configurations. And I would suggest that anyone who has a kid in the sixth, seventh or eighth grade make an opportunity to attend.
Wow, was it big enough? I mean, no, I'm seeing, I've been at that dining room meeting, I don't think it's that huge.
Is he doing multiple or is this the only one of that?
This is the one right now, he might do other ones after the first of the year.
I would.
Has anybody attended the, the school on the Cape that they were talking about? Two or, I should say?
They did, they did, they toured, they toured, three of them. And they issued a report, the superintendent issued a report that the last meeting, which we had was last Tuesday, so it's probably on the Minichad, the little video.
I see they had the Booster Club meeting on the twentieth, I wonder how that went?
I don't know.
It was in the library, you know.
I don't see.
Yeah, I'll bring that book back soon, I promise. No other real meetings, I, well, obviously we have the school, the seniors and a building committee meeting on Monday, four hours if you guys are available. Greg? Yeah, Don?
I'll be in Vermont.
You're doing a good job, I bet.
Thanks, 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 Bob?
I'll be in Vermont.
Did you get the invite?
So, but again, the big thing to look forward to is Sunday night, I know Craig will be in fine form, John will be there.
Sure.
I don't think we'll have snow this year, but we got this beautiful new tree out front.
Nice tree.
It's a nice tree, nice tree.
Thanks to Jane, it's shaped like this, it's got the right proper shape.
It's actually got needles on this one. They're all on the ground. Lauren, do you have anything for us?
No.
When do you, when do you want to switch the gavel?
I figured the meeting after the first, cause I want to leave you with the police contract, the cable contract, the cell power lease.
Highway Department.
Highway Department, the RFQ for the fire station.
Okay, all right, good.
In case you were thinking of just, wow, I'm just gonna sit back and enjoy all this stuff.
All right, I was hoping you'd get that done, but apparently.
I'm gonna get your new shirt that says Board of Selectmen, just like the fire department guys.
Nice.
Yeah, I thought you'd like that.
He does shirts, right? I could do a shirt.
Tie dye for all of us, thanks. Don't put that in Dalton, thank you. All right, is there any other business to come before the board?
Work, do a journey.